Well, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much for joining me here today. I truly appreciate it. Today is the City of Sioux Falls State of the City address, and I'm truly looking forward to spending the next couple of minutes with you to talk about your great city. When I was on the campaign trail before I earned the honor to become the mayor of this great city, I spent some time going to churches around town. And I went to one particular church called the New Jerusalem Church here in the heart of our city. And there, I met a wonderful pastor and an even more wonderful congregation. They prayed for me at that time. They also prayed for our city at that time. I went back right before Election Day, and they prayed for me, and they prayed for the city again. Now the mayor. It's been almost a year, and I thought, what a better person to bring back than Pastor Solomon Garcia, who leads that church. I'm going to ask Pastor Solomon to give us a prayer, and then I'd ask you to remain standing. We'll do the pledge, and then I so look forward to telling you about your great city. Pastor Solomon?
Hello, everybody here in this room. I'm so glad to lead with praying this morning, this day, and I'm so glad to meet everybody here in this room. Let's pray. Close your eyes, please. Heavenly Father, we come in unity here this day. We give you the glory. We give you the honor. Father, we asking to bless in this meeting today, bring us in unity and one heart, one mind. We give you thank you for every leader here, Lord. We will thank you for Mayor Mike Hutter and his leadership. Thank you, Father, for giving us the opportunity to invoke your name, Lord. We asking to bless in all the wills that you have in our hearts. Thank you for put this in our minds. Father, I asking to bless in all the, everything that we have in mind for this city. We bless in this city. We bless in Sioux Falls and all the people here, Lord. Also, Father, I asking to bless in Ronald Johnson family, giving a strange, giving peace, giving hope, Lord. Father, in the name of Jesus, we ask for all this. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Holy Spirit. En el nombre de Jesucristo, bendecimos el nombre del Señor aquí en este momento. Señor, pedimos que bendigas a Sioux Falls. Bendice a sus líderes también. Gracias, Señor. I just said, bless in Sioux Falls. Bless in all the leaders here in this moment. Thank you. In the name of Jesus. And everybody say, "Amen."
Again, thanks for being here today to share this special memory with me. I'm really excited to tell you about our great city. Tell you, we are on a very, very solid foundation in this town. I'm very blessed to be the mayor of Sioux Falls and not the mayor of some other city, and I'm going to tell you why. I'm going to start with the foundation of our great town, and I'm going to tell you how we're doing financially. It's sad sometimes, and we always have to talk about money, but it's reality. And we do have to talk about things like money when you're talking about the city of Sioux Falls, and that's what we're going to do. What I'll tell you is that most in our great country would absolutely love to be in our financial position. I'm going to start with how we're doing on the revenue side of the equation. What you're seeing is how we've been doing in terms of general fund revenue, and the line is going up. And we believe that it will continue to go up throughout 2011, and right now, we're projecting that we're going to end the year at around $117 million in general fund revenue. This tells you a little bit about where we collect our revenue that helps fuel this engine that we call Sioux Falls. The majority of it comes from things like property taxes and, yes, sales taxes. And when you look at where we're at in 2009 and where we ended in 2010, you're going to see it moved up. 4% increase year over year, and I'll tell you, that's a great thing, and it's a sign of things to come. We also have to look at, how do we spend our money in this town? And I've got just great news to share, that when it came down to the general fund expenses for 2010, Mayor Munson, the department heads, and the 1,100 city employees, they didn't wait. They took immediate action at the beginning of last year, and they buckled down all year long. And the savings showed, the taxpayer dollar savings showed, they saved almost $9 million last year. They did more with less. As we look at this even more closely, you're going to see that revenues were better than what we had expected, and the expenses were lower than what we had expected. Then when you look at where we ended up in terms of the reserves, this is a wow, wow, wow story. And I'll tell you, I don't know many cities around the country, if any, that went into last year thinking they were not going to utilize reserve funds. We thought we were going to use $5.3 million in reserve funds. Later, in our contingency plan, we thought we'd use about $3.5 million in reserve funds. Guess what we did, Sioux Falls? We actually put money into our reserve funds in one of the toughest economic climates that this city, that this state, and this country has ever engaged in. It's a $6 million swing. The general fund, and that unreserved fund balance that we care so much about, tell you, this is a city that is cautious, but we're also very prepared. Reserves are a good thing. They help us prepare for a number of things, such as emergencies that may come up, unexpected cost increases, and, yes, maybe potential large investments in our city at some point in time when we believe the timing is right. We set a goal in this town. The city council did the very, very prudent thing by setting a goal in this town, and that they wanted a 25% goal. Well, this city is way above that. Right now, we're nearly 34% as a percentage of our unreserved numbers to budget. That's incredible. Talking more about this money and revenues flowing into our town, we weren't as confident going into last year as we have been in the past. But I'll tell you, by the end of last year, we were very, very pleasantly surprised. Actually, our first penny sales tax revenue dollars came in higher than expected. Consumer confidence is growing. People are spending again, and Sioux Falls is ultimately winning. Now, to be fair, we are not near, we're not at where we were in terms of our peak in 2008, but we're catching up again, and that's a great sign of things to come. One of the things that was strong in 2010 is that families started to invest back into their homes again. Remodeling was a big deal in 2010. Repairing, rebuilding, replacing people's homes was a big deal. It was also a big deal for your city. Remodeling was good, and we did it in a big, big way. In 2010, that second penny that we were able to accumulate, it went to some very, very big projects, so I just wanted to touch on a couple. Forty-four substantial projects were completed last year, such as, some of the big ones, refurbishing Minnesota Avenue and Russell Avenue, reconstructing River Boulevard, reconstructing 8th Street, replacing 41st Street Bridge on one of the busiest streets in this state, renovating the main library, and improvements to the Great Plains Zoo, for example, with the rhino exhibit. And there's others that are in place right now and that we're working on that will reap the rewards from in the years to come, such as the Junior Football Complex, the Big Sioux River Greenway, 69th Street and the improvements we're making there, and Solberg Avenue and that I-229 overpass near 69th Street in Tall Grass. These are investments, and they're worthy investments back into this home that we so love and care for. This is a city that tightened its belts. But we also reaped the rewards of a good bidding environment. We had planned on doing a variety of different projects last year, and we went out and we received bids on these, and ultimately, what we found is that some of these bids were coming in lower than expected. In fact, most of them came in lower than expected. We ended up with a reserve balance of $7 million. Now, we are going to move some of those projects forward into 2011, and we're doing that now, but we still have, as a city, almost $4 million in unobligated funds that we can still do something with. These are extra dollars in the cookie jar. They are. And I really look forward to working with the city council to allocate them in the best way that we can for this city. You know, we talked about the sales tax revenues. Let's talk about some other sources of revenue that we have, such as property tax revenue. This is a big deal. It's on the rise. We've got more and more money coming into the coffers of our city government, and that's a good thing. It helps fuel this engine that we have. It also went up about 4.3%, and we'll reap the rewards of that. One of the things that we do have to look at, or what are some of the challenges that maybe we still face as a city here? Well, we are in the recovery mode when it comes to some things, such as, when you look at residential and non-residential construction in our town, it's not as great as what we would like it to be, and it's not as great as what it's been in the past. The slide that I'm showing you shows that it is a bit lower. About $145 million in residential construction and about $138 million in non-residential construction. We are in recovery mode, but I'll tell you, Sioux Falls, it's better than most areas across the country. We can do better somewhere else, too, and that's unemployment rates in our city. We are so used to having extremely low unemployment rates here, and I want to get back to that, and I know that Sioux Falls does, too. We have had a rise over the last couple of years, but this also is trending back to where we'd like it to be. On the slide that you see in front of you, we are the blue line. The lower, the better. You see the national unemployment rate of around 10%. You see South Dakota's unemployment rate of about 4.8%, and we ended 2007 at about Jobs growth. Another thing that we are truly focused on in the city and will continue to be focused on for years to come, again, Sioux Falls, we're the blue line. On this particular graph, being higher is better. You see the national trend, you see the South Dakota's trend, and you see our trend. We're coming back, and that's, again, a great thing. This is a city that borrows money very, very cautiously, very, very prudently, for capital products, projects. That's things that you can touch, things that you can feel, things that you can see, capital. We don't borrow, we don't borrow in this town for operating expenses. One thing, too, you need to be aware of is that when we do borrow, the vast majority of that goes to the basic foundation of our government, of our city, the infrastructure, the bone. That's what we invest in here, and it's so critical. Things like Lewis and Clark Regional Water System, water and water reclamation improvements, storm drainage improvements, sanitary sewage things, flood control, some of those boring things that we take for granted, but we can't. And we do good things with the money that we do borrow. I will let you know that we're going to pay off about $20 million in principal in 2011 alone, and that's solid when it comes to our financials. Sioux Falls, not only do I know that we are financially strong, but there are experts that are out there that do this for a living, that evaluate entities like our city to determine if we are financially strong. I'll let you read what they have to say about our city. Moody's. Moody's has given us a bond rating of a double A2, and they've acknowledged our city's strength by saying, "We have solid debt service coverage, well-managed city finances, and a healthy reserve level." I think their words say it better than mine any day. People are concerned with debt, and they should be. I'm concerned with debt, and I have been my entire life. No one really wants to ever borrow. Cash is always king, and I understand that, but there are times when you do have to borrow money. In this town, we balance progress with prudence. Look at how we compare against other cities just like ours. When you look at the amount of money that we borrow in this town, and you compare that to other cities like Fargo and Lincoln and Cedar Rapids and Des Moines and Rochester and Sioux City and Omaha and Rapid City, Sioux Falls borrows less per capita than any of them. What a great sign of strength. Now, we've been talking in this city about a major, major investment that potentially we could, we would take on. Just want to kind of give you a flavor, that if the city of Sioux Falls took on $100 million in additional debt, where would we be then? We'd still be near at the bottom. We go up a little bit above Omaha and a little bit above Rapid City, but I do need to make clear, make you clear of one thing, that doesn't, the Omaha and Rapid City numbers, we don't know if they're going to borrow anything in 2011. So we don't know where they would end up, but I would tell you that if we were to borrow even $100 million, we'll still be dramatically lower than most cities in our size. I'll tell you, the people of Sioux Falls, the citizens of Sioux Falls, they are excited about their future, and they should be. When we look into this future, this 2011, we started by being prudent again. We set aside a budget of about $307 million, and you see where we spend it, but it is a very, very conservative budget. We did it in 2010, and we're going to do it again in 2011. Let's talk about the two. 2010, the budget that was laid out at that time was $123.6 million. The budget that was ultimately approved by the city council was $118 million. It was a change of $5 million. It was an actual reduction in terms of dollar amounts that we wanted to spend in this city. One of the first times, maybe the first time, that's ever happened in Sioux Falls' history. When you look at what the amount that we're looking to spend in 2011, and you compare that to where we actually ended in 2010, we are going to grow a little bit, but not much. Very, very limited growth in 2011. And I'll tell you, Sioux Falls, families did it, you all did it, businesses did it, and the city of Sioux Falls, your government is doing it as well. I'll tell you, I know that there are some in town that would like us to go back to the way it used to be. I know that. It's not going to happen. We are no longer a small town. We are a city. The population, the estimated population, or the population in 2010, 153,888 people. That's a 24, almost 25% increase in terms of population from where we were in 2000. Ten years later, we grew by 25%. The estimate for 2011 is that we've already grown to 156,500. And then here's the real kicker. By 2025, 2025, 15 years from now, we're going to be at 220,000 people, just in the city. Almost a quarter of a million people are going to live in our town, are going to live in our city in 15 years. We're already there. If you look at the area as a whole, we already are around a quarter of a million people when you look at the area right around Sioux Falls. We're already there. We are no longer a small town, Sioux Falls. And I'll tell you, because we are growing, because we are getting larger, we definitely have a responsibility to the people of South Dakota as well. We are the rocket fuel that drives this economic engine in our state. We are. We welcome it. We do. We always have. We've always accepted the challenge. And Sioux Falls, we always want to do more than our fair share, and I think that this slide proves that we're doing that and more. When you look at our population, for example, we already make up 19% of our state's population. Terms of the revenues that are generated, we make up about 20% of the gross sales. One out of every five dollars that is generated in our state is generated in this city. Just like Sioux Falls, the things that help generate our infrastructure, help pay for our operating expenses, come back to those taxable sales dollars. Well, over 20%, almost 23% of those taxable sales dollars are generated right here in this city. Sioux Falls, South Dakota needs this, too. We're big, and we're getting bigger. Our city limits are made up of almost 74 square miles. 61 of those miles are in Minnehaha County. Almost 12 of those miles are in Lincoln County. This is something that I think you'll find intriguing. These are the area school districts, and look how far out we go into the Tri-Valley School District, West Central, Lenox, T., Harrisburg, Canton, Brandon Valley, and, yes, the Sioux Falls School District. Our city is beyond our borders of the Sioux Falls School District. We are growing, and we're going to continue to grow, and we'll have to care about the needs of those areas of town as well as we grow. We're building again. Not as much as we're used to, but we're building again. We're in recovery mode. We built 784 new housing units in 2010, 362 new single-family homes, 76 two-family homes, 316 apartments, and 30 manufactured homes. Where's that growth taking place? I think, as you would expect, it's happening on the outskirts of town. That's where the new homes are being built. Even though it slowed down a bit in terms of that home construction, I, again, wanted to give you a sense of where we fit in terms of how we compare with other cities as well. We fit somewhere in the middle. When you look at our construction rates and comparing those to other cities like ours, you can see Rapid City is, they've really, really slowed down. Fargo has as well. And then some of those cities that are doing better than Sioux Falls, Omaha and Aurora, Colorado, and Lincoln, but we're smack dab in the middle. We're not doing, we're not doing too bad at all. One of the things that I think that we have to realize is that as the city grows and as we attract more and more people from outside of town coming into Sioux Falls, the one thing that we are very, very much aware of is that the need for public transportation is becoming greater and greater. People are focused more and more on the environment. We've got things like rising gas prices, which cause people to source other means of transportation. And again, we've got people moving into Sioux Falls that are used to it, that expect it. And ultimately, investing in infrastructure like this is the right thing, is the right thing to do. The demand is strong, and it's getting stronger. Sioux Falls is on the move. This is really, really an exciting thing that's happening, and I want to tell you more about it. I told you that if I was elected mayor, that I would focus more and more on repairing, replacing, and rebuilding the infrastructure, especially the roads in Sioux Falls. This kind of gives you an idea of all the activities that took place in 2010. We spent about $57.4 million on road construction efforts in our city. 63 miles of road were worked on, repaired, rebuilt, replaced in 2010. 2011, I told you, this would be at least a two-year project, if not more. We're right back at it again, Sioux Falls. There's orange barrels everywhere, and there's going to be a lot more coming. Right now, we're planning on spending about $55 million on these roads in our town, and that's an additional 57 miles of road in 2011. And when you combine the two, when you combine the two, that's the, the green is 2010 roadways that were improved, and the blue is 2011 roadways that will be improved. That's 120 miles of road improvements that have been done in two years. I made that commitment to you that we would. I'm keeping my word, Sioux Falls. I'm keeping my word. There's more work to do. You've got to love those potholes. No, you don't. You don't. But it's a reality. It's a reality. We live in South Dakota. We do. And I'm very, very much aware that there's a pothole on probably every street somewhere in our town. in our town. I understand that. I'm a realist. We don't put our heads in the sand in the Public Works Department and say, "I can't do this anymore." We understand it. You understand it as well. And we're working on it aggressively. We've got more work to do, but we've got a renewed focus. We've got to improve processes. And yes, we've got to improve products, such as this TechCreed product, that is helping us catch up, that's helping us attack things like these potholes in our town. Our challenge is greater because of our weather, but I'll tell you, the Public Works team in this city, they're more than up to the challenge. There's a date that I'll never forget, and there's a date that I know that you folks probably won't forget, and that was August 4th of 2010. So we had a major crisis in our city that we weren't expecting, and that we certainly don't want to have happen again. I want to thank the city council for having the foresight, for having the guts, for having the leadership to realize that we do need to invest in the infrastructure when it comes to some of those boring things like water and sewage investments. But they're critical. And we're working on those now in 2011, and we'll continue to do that. Thank you, city council, for doing that. Flood control. I'll tell you, we averted a big one this year, it looks like, in 2011. But we're going to continue to invest in things like flood control this year and in the years to come. And I'll tell you, we will be ready for the next big one that may come our way. There are some very, very exciting development projects happening in our city. The investments are indeed everywhere. I'm going to take you on a little tour of our town. I'm going to take you around Sioux Falls a little bit, and let you know what's going on in your part of the city. Let's start with the northwest. University Center is making improvements. The Sanford Sports Complex, if you haven't seen what's going on, you need to drive by. The airport, they're investing not only in the parking lot, but again, making great investments in the terminal as well. Worthington Ag Parts Distribution, it's a major coup. It's a big deal. We've got a major company that's coming into Sioux Falls from Minnesota. This won't be the last. One of the biggest street repair projects that Mark and his team will be undertaking is West Avenue from Russell to Sixth Street. And yes, the investment that the Sioux Falls Public Schools is making into Howard Woodfield, that's a big deal for the northwest, and it's a big deal for Sioux Falls. The southwest. West Side Branch Library. I'll tell you, people like Jody Fick and her team, they are so excited about it, and so am I. The west side has been waiting a long time for their library, and it's coming. 57th Street, boy, if we get calls on any road in town, it's probably 57th Street. It is. There are smoother roads ahead, Sioux Falls, from Louise Avenue to T. Ellis Road. Sherman Park, more improvements there, whether it be the zoo entrance and some improvements to the softball fields. Another road, major road construction project, 69th Street and Tall Grass Avenue. Solberg Avenue, 59th Street to 69th. These two projects will set the stage for some really, really exciting things in the years to come for southwest Sioux Falls. And then again, another one that gets a lot of attention, the busiest road in our state, 41st Street, needs work. And work on it we will do in 2011. You don't know this probably, but I'm going to tell you some good things. The Empire Mall, we may take it for granted sometimes, but they're not done. They're not done. There's some exciting things coming to the Empire Mall in 2011 and 2012. I'll let them share the news with you. And then, just like we talked about, we are moving closer and closer to the towns around us. And there's going to be new Harrisburg School now in that southwest part of town, which will be exciting as well. Dolly Farm Village. You're going to be hearing more about another exciting announcement that's coming to Dolly Farm, and I'll let them share that one with you as well. Rosa Parks Elementary School and the addition out there. Hy-Vee, another one that's investing back into our community. Charger Circle to Southeastern and that 69th Street addition, that again will help set the stage for good things to come. And then Harmonon Park and the 57th Street entrance. We've got this Highway 100 that we're continuing to work on, and all these improvements will play right into that and the exciting things that we expect will happen. The northeast. You know, we've been waiting a long time for this, but when it occurs, we will have a railroad investment, a railroad switching yard that'll be second to none in this nation. And we're going to reap the rewards from it. Water Reclamation Plant is going in. The bike trail extension from Falls Park to Lean Park. Pioneer Park, the restroom and the improvements that are being made there. The water purification plant. And then, yes, Central Sioux Falls. This is, yes, the downtown is down there, and in my mind, I've told you about this, I believe it's the heartbeat of our city. I do. I want it to be a great place where you can live, where you can work, where you can shop, you can dine, and yes, you can reflect and enjoy the day that God has given you, right in downtown Sioux Falls. I just want it to pump even stronger. And we're working on that in more ways than you can imagine. One of the examples I wanted to give is that we have what was called a facade easement program, where we help invest back into the history of our great city. Rather than tearing buildings down, we want to maintain them. We want to maintain some of the integrity, some of the history of our downtown, of our beautiful downtown. This is just one example with the Hammond Building. Downtown River Greenway. I hope you folks are as excited about this one as I am. We're making great progress, and we're going to continue this project towards the south. We're going to keep moving towards those businesses that are in the heart of our city. I moved here from San Antonio. I saw the things that could happen there when you invest in those River Greenways, and I hope that we can do the same thing here, and I know that we will. Thank goodness for people like Lloyd Companies and businesses like CNA Surety. They wanted to invest into the heart of our city, and boy, are they investing with their new CNA Surety building. Other investments, we've been talking about the Uptown Project, and I will tell you, the Uptown Project is going to happen. Just two examples of that are the Third Street Lofts and the Good Samaritan Center that's going to be built there, and the investment of that. Falls Park restroom and the playground, St. Joseph Catholic Housing. You'll be able to drive again on another very, very busy street in our town, and you're going to see great things happen right here in 2011. And it's going to provide very, very good and affordable housing, and that is a need that we need to fill in such a big, big way. Sanford Heart Hospital. I'll tell you, we are so blessed to have Vera McKenon, Orthopedic Institute, Sanford Health, and so many others in the health industry here in our town. The Sanford Heart Hospital is a huge deal, and again, it's happening right here in the heart of our city. More road repair. We made some aesthetic changes to it last year. Well, now we're really going to attack it in a big, big way, and that's that 10th Street and Cliff Avenue intersection, the Minnehaha County Safe Home Project, which is well underway, and they believe they will have that done in 2011. And then, yes, all over downtown, you're going to see a lot of improvements made to the streets, whether it be through concrete, joint, and panel repair, all throughout downtown Sioux Falls. You know, a lot of cities that you go into, they get excited about one project. Well, in our city, we get excited about a bunch of projects. There's a lot going on all over our town. There are people investing again. There are people in building again. There are people excited again, and I'm just excited as well. I'll tell you, we don't wait in this city. Opportunity doesn't wait in this city. There are some things that we're going to continue to work on, and we need to. A solid city is one that just doesn't care about investments or infrastructure. There's other things that we need to key on too. And I don't want anybody to think that we've lost sight of that. Some of the other things that I'm going to work on, along with the department heads and the 1,100 city employees, and yes, the city council. We're going to work to keep your families safe. When it comes to quality of life, safety is the most important factor that there is. We are in desperate need of a new financial management system for the city of Sioux Falls. We're going to continue to rebuild, repair, and replace the aging infrastructure of our city. We are going to do a comprehensive review of the pension plan, and that's an important thing to do. We're going to reorganize, and we're going to centralize more and more of the city services. We're going to work to get a bigger bang for that buck. We're going to take these 1,100 passionate and committed employees, and we're going to make them even more productive and make them excited about that. I'm excited about bringing even more jobs with good wages and good benefits to Sioux Falls. And then, yes, we're going to continue to work on things like quality of life improvements, such as affordable airfare. What is important to one person in Sioux Falls may ultimately not be important to another. It's reality. Depending on someone's age, they think about their life and the things that are important to them differently. It just kind of gives you an idea. Generally, when you're in your 20s, you care about things like entertainment and arts and affordable housing and creative opportunities. When you're 30s to early 40s, you care about things like good schools, safe neighborhoods, affordable daycare. Late 40s and 50s and early 60s, leisure activities, arts and culture, recreation. And then, as we get older, climate, healthcare, physical safety, social opportunities, and things like that. We're not always going to agree. We won't. But we do find common ground. Good cities find common ground. They ultimately do what's right for the city as a whole. Our city is special. Sioux Falls is special. Our citizens are unique. Stewardship is a way of life here. We are cautious, but we are hopeful. Working together, there's absolutely nothing that we can't accomplish. There are folks that I know that will say things to me over the, as I've been mayor, and it's fine, but they'll say things like, "I won't benefit from it. The time just isn't right. We can't afford to do it. It just will be too difficult. Why don't we let someone else do it?" Like many before us, we can overcome any challenges. We can. Don't tell Sioux Falls citizens that it can't be done. Don't tell old but reliable companies in Sioux Falls that it can't be done. John Morrell and Company, they've had to deal with rumor, innuendo, speculation, this and that for years. Tell you, the leaders of that company, they've stayed focused, the workers have stayed strong, and they continue to invest in Sioux Falls, and this city continues to reap the Don't tell Sioux Falls people of faith that it can't be done. Can you imagine the pushback that these leaders had in 1915, when they were talking about building a cathedral that would end up being the largest church in the state and one of the largest in the entire country? Don't tell Sioux Falls small business owners that it can't be done. Menorvaz was the place on Phillips with the salad bar. Not anymore. They've got three restaurants in Sioux Falls alone, and they've got nine others across the Midwest. Don't tell them it can't be done. Don't tell Sioux Falls stewards with big dreams that it can't be done. Talk to Danny Sanford. Talk to Kelby Kravonoff. Talk to the others at Sanford Health that they're not going to find a cure for type 1 diabetes. Just try it. This castle, so many people were making fun of it. This is a place now where sick and injured children find inspiration. Don't tell Sioux Falls community leaders that it can't be done. Not everyone in this city has used the Washington Pavilion. Not yet, anyway. But I'll tell you, we've all benefited from it in some way. It's a place where you go to educate, entertain, inspire, and enrich by making arts and science parts of the lives of those from Sioux Falls. Don't tell Sioux Falls inventors that it can't be done. They started in Scotland, South Dakota. This is now the world's largest ethanol producer. The world's largest. Don't tell Sioux Falls entrepreneurs that it can't be done. I'm going to read something to you. Business was stable but not outstanding the first year. With sales of $95,000, Raven lost $13,000 that year. It was the only loss in the history of Raven. That was 1956. Last year alone, they had over $200 million in sales. Don't tell South Dakotans that it can't be done. Times were tough in South Dakota. The governor had just proposed a 5% across-the-board cut in the size of state government. The city's largest employer in Sioux Falls at that time was struggling. And in 1981, there were just seven houses that were built in Sioux Falls. Many fought this. Many fought the legislation that would make this happen. The governor at that time, legislative leaders at that time, other business leaders in this town at that time, that cared about the state, that cared about the city as a whole, they took their share of shots along the way. Can you imagine what this city, and can you imagine what this state would have looked like if those people would have given up and would have failed to have lead? A quote, "Nobody could have envisioned what we would have grown into what we are today." Don't tell Sioux Falls city councilors that it can't be done. Mayor Monson, the city councilors, and many others took a ton of this and that when it came to this project. The naysaying was huge. There is no one in this town that thinks that investment, that time, that energy, that sweat, that pain wasn't worth it. No one. No one. Don't tell Sioux Falls founding fathers that it can't be done. This Sioux Falls arena has served us incredibly well over the last 50 years. We're being asked to do the unthinkable again. Let's do what we do best, Sioux Falls. I know it won't be easy. I know it will be worth it, though, for generations to come. My daughter Kylie is 22. I have a picture in my office of where I took her to school on her very first day of kindergarten. That was yesterday. That was yesterday. We can focus so much about today, but we have to also stay focused on those that are going to be here after us, the generations to come. I know you all know what I'm talking about. It's our next opportunity. It's Sioux Falls' next great challenge. It's our new event center. This is a city with just incredible financial strength. It's a city with unbelievably optimistic and forward-looking people. And it's a city that has ample opportunity, and they realize it, and we go out and we capture it. Sioux Falls, we're on very, very solid ground, rock-solid ground. I just can't thank you enough for giving me this opportunity to help lead the city and help move it forward. I've got to tell you, I'm truly enjoying the days that I've got. I'm honored to represent all of you. I'm working incredibly hard, and I am truly enjoying the relationship with the City Council. I need to tell the people of Sioux Falls, thank you for being there for Cindy, Kylie, and I along this journey. And I'll tell you, I don't want to let you down. I know the City Council won't let you down. I know the 1,100 city employees of this city are not going to let you down either. Sioux Falls, feel good about your city. Feel really good about it. Let's make it a great day. Let's make it a great year. And God bless the city of Sioux Falls. Thank you.